Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And he's going to talk to us for a few minutes.
Good afternoon, everyone, good evening, council members. This evening, just wanted to update you since a new council. We've been, I guess, working with the city, with the previous administration, on a comprehensive plan project. And so, I just wanted to come today to bring some updates as to where we are. And fill you in and to answer any questions that you're going to have. So this process started approximately a year ago, in August 2015. And there are several requirements that we had to fill. So I'll just give you these, and then explain what the due. So I'm with TACOG, and TACOG is acronym for TACO, Alabama Regional Council of Governments. It's an air agency or agent. But we also do economic development and planning for small rural communities such as yours, even as you cities, for five counties, Marshall, DeKalb, Lionstone, Madison. And so, what we try to do, what we involved in doing, is setting up a comprehensive plan or strategic plan for the development of Ringsville. Again, this has been a year-long project, and unfortunately, we are a little bit behind the schedule. This project was supposed to have been ended and concluded in August of this year. But we've had some challenges in scheduling, participation from the community, et cetera. However, we were able to procure a 120-day extension, which, again, unfortunately, ends at the end of this month, the 30th of November. So what I'm here today to do is to bring you up to speed with where we are, and to ask your involvement in terms of setting a meeting date, where we can sit with the council members and anyone else who would be pertinent, really critical to this planning process, so we can identify some goals and objectives for the future of Ringsville. So if you look at the first chart I have here, it gives you a list of one to seven. And this is pretty much the process that we've been going through. Project orientation, evaluation of both the economic and fiscal conditions. And four is where we are at right now. But concurrently, we have looked at the land use and subdivision regulations, as well as the zoning regulations, and we can make recommendations. But to move forward, we need to have that meeting. Now, in, I think it was October, July, more specifically, of this year, we met right in this hall. We invited the community to come out, and we had a really good workshop, getting the feedback from the residents as to what they like about Ringsville, and what they didn't like about Ringsville, and what ideas they have for the growth of the city. And so, we have that information. We were also able to put out an online survey, also a hard copy survey. We surveyed all the residents as much as possible. We didn't get a lot of participation out of 5,000 people in Ringsville. We only had 103 responses. And that included going to the high schools and getting some of the seniors and getting their feedback as well. Nonetheless, your second copy here, you see some graphs and charts. This is an analysis of the survey. It sort of groups all the data that we collected, both on that day and from the survey. And it sort of breaks down the condition of the city based on the residents' opinions, how they feel about it. The last two sheets are really critical. They have to, they are responses from the citizens, exact responses from the citizens, about two things that they like about Ringsville, and two things that they wish they could change about. And the reason why I'm bringing this to you today is because, hopefully, when I sit with you in the very near future, this will give you an idea of the feedback we get from the residents, where their minds are. And so that when you make your plans, or when we sit and think about what goals and objectives we set for the future development, it would happen, in fact. So these copies, I'm asking you to really take some time, spend some time, I know it's a holiday week, and it's going to be difficult. We do have a time crunch, but I ask you to spend some time with it, to look at the results, and so soak it in. So when we meet, hopefully, I can hear from the mayor, and have a date set very soon, this information will be very relevant to any decisions that you make. We've gone ahead as well, we've done a few assessments. So even though that we are still on section four of the plan, we have gone ahead, and we have started looking at issues that are pretty pertinent to Ringsville. And one of the things that are really critical in Ringsville is how we use our land. Now, just to give you a brief, you see a lot of yellows, a lot of greens. The greens are pretty much farms, forestry, agricultural lands. The yellow is mainly housing, different types of housing. So we haven't isolated what type of housing, whether it's high density or low density. But mostly in Ringsville, you have a lot of low-density housing. We've also highlighted the industrial part, and sort of identified most of the commercial portfolio by posses. So we have been working at that, but we can't go forward because it's not our city. It's your city, it's your city. And so, we need feedback to tell us where to go and how to move forward. And so, any recommendations that we make, yes, we can make professional recommendations. However, this is your plan, and so we need as much involvement as possible to tell us what you would like the city to look like or to be like in terms of economic development, physical development, and overall benefits for the residents of Ringsville. If you have any questions.
Can you put that map on the wall for us to pre-discussing with the people when they come in in the future, in the next state?
Absolutely, absolutely. And we have several maps, this is not the only map that we've had. One of the exercises we had the last time we invited the public to come in, we had blown up maps of the city of Ringsville with the city of Long Island. And we asked people, based on a color-coded scheme, identify issues, so identify things that were good, identify facilities, recreational facilities, identify businesses, things that people that they can improve. So we have that data, and we have consolidated it, we provide it for you, and as soon as you set a date for us, we would meet and we would reveal our findings to you, so that you can make the best decision possible.
We have met before, we've dealt with, in the past. Really truly, we haven't got anything yet.
Uh, TACOG?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the reason I'm asking all this question. What can it benefit, are you going to give us to this town if we, if we're going to go with y'all and help us with the new projects?
Well, I think you already decided to go with us. This grant was applied for in 2014, 2015. It's no cost to the city of Ringsville. And so, this grant was an Appalachian Regional Commission grant. And so, they're contracted with, you're contracted with us to provide you a service. So, a roadmap, if you would like, that guides your future, that guides your development, that guides your zoning, that guides the things that you need to put in place to make sure that you grow correctly, that you have the appropriate mechanisms and parameters in place, so that the city grows the way you want it to grow.
And what are grants set for, what can we use it for?
Comprehensive plan, you can leverage to get other grants. Most of the cities, small cities and towns, even like Menzo, I'm currently working with Menzo on their comprehensive plan. Because of the state of Alabama, doesn't necessarily require it, but they have guidelines on these. And some of these state agencies that provide grants, they are more inclined to work with you if you have a plan. And it's always better to have a plan going forward, a comprehensive plan that the residents can refer to and also you can refer to. Now, this is not a hard and fast rule or regulations, this is not set in stone. It's recommended that every five years, you look up your comprehensive plan. Now, you don't require TACOG, it's not required, or you don't need TACOG to do that every five years. Once you have an original plan in place, you can update it as you see fit. The last comprehensive plan or strategic plan that the city of Ringsville had looked like this, 1969. And so, this was done by us as well, TACOG also. But it's very much updated, and I think a lot of the cities around you, a lot of the assessment that we're making are very valuable in terms of your, looking at your demographics, looking at your economics, in terms of what businesses that are available, what letages you have. And letages are simply what people are buying elsewhere that you don't provide in your city. So it gives you a really good idea, a very good synopsis, that you can look at it and use it to sort of chart a course going forward. And that's the real benefit of it. Any other questions?
Well, with this group of new people that come in and talk about it again, both for their holidays, it's hard for us to get a schedule anytime soon. That's what the mayor wants to set it up, but I feel like maybe about middle of January, maybe we can set a...
I think he's on the timeline.
I know, he said, end of this month, but how are we going to advertise it? How are we going to get people interested in planning Ringsville?
Well, I've met with the city already, and I think that Derek, some of the key strategic people that needs to be on this last meeting. And again, it doesn't have to take more than 90 minutes to do this. The chief, the police chief, the fire chief, president of the Chamber of Commerce, some of the people, you have a revenue officer, some of the people who make decisions, key components of the city government, as well as yourself. I've had the information, I've collected the information from the public already, now I need to know what the new administration thinks about Ringsville.
We could probably set up a meeting and have those people there.
Absolutely. So if it's any inconvenience, just let me know, and we will do our best.
All right, we'll do it.
Thank you very much for that time.
Thank you. I guess I'll start off with, I've got a board appointment, and this board appointment is for the Public Building Authority. And the reason for that appointment is I had a resignation from that Public Building Authority, that was Rodney Williams, and I'll be taking that up tonight, he gave me a written, a written notice that he was wanting to come off, and then I turned around and called him back to make sure that he wanted to come off, and he does. And so, I will be placing Larry Traylor in his place. That's one thing I have to run forward to y'all. The other thing is, the wastewater treatment plant has got a pump station that's needing some repair work done on it. And we've done some of the other plants and, or pump stations, changed it over to stainless steel, and it's $2,800 in swine farming, we'll be doing that one. It's the pump station at the agri center. Tonight, we will put out for bids for pest control, for all the buildings that the city owns, that we will put out for bid from different people to do the pest control for that. We'll take that up at the next meeting, so that'll be one of the things I have. Then from there, we'll start off with, we'll start off with Derek down there, I mean, what you got, Derek?
Just got two things tonight. First, when we power the mayor to sign the service agreement, what are you doing? It's a yearly contract at $375 a year to do all of her, I guess, replacements and new stuff. Second thing I got, I'll be resigning from the Tom Bell Center Board tonight. That's all I've got.
Brendan?
First thing I have is the bid openings for the pool slash splash pad. We had three bids come in today, and we can only limit them at five o'clock, and kind of see the direction that's going. We're going to try to pass the advertising budget. Got a quote from Jimmy Traylor about the changes in City Hall. I got another quote from Jimmy Traylor about panic bars for the City Hall. Another one, let's see. And then the accepted quote for adding the bars and the door replacement at City Hall, and then purchasing a drag for the complex.
Wow.
First thing I have, I'm going to be resigning from the Agri Center Board. I have the recommendation from the Agri Center Board for the replacement. The second thing I have is the, we have some street repairs, there are not alleyways that the other administration's been working on. There's three different ones that we're looking at right now. Up around Rose Street and Church Street is one of them. The other one is back over around First Avenue, from Harrison back out to Oak Street. The other one is back down here around the Hall Temple glass. Other administration's been working on this, and I would bring that to y'all tonight to make, we can go ahead. Those alleyways was actually put in about when we had garbage truck and men riding on the back for the, that when the subdivision was built. So, we don't need those, so I'll be bringing that to y'all consideration, to okay for sale, and you see the attorney, to finish that, whatever steps we have to have to complete that, to give that back to those property owners. Then I will be making that appointment on the Agri Center Board.
So we no longer using those alleyways?
No, never.
What does people do for green roads?
Comes out and they put it on the side of the road.
This is behind the houses, there was an alleyway behind the house.
Most of them's grass, if you never even see.
This is just the start of this, we've got some more alleyways that we're looking at to turn back to the citizens.
The other thing I have is the clock out for City Hall that was installed. It's broke, it's going to need repair, estimated somewhere between eight and 100 to 1,600 dollars, depending on the part, depending on how long the timeframe, however, how long it takes to repair it.
What's wrong with it?
It's been 9:15 for about six months.
I believe when they bought it, they mostly gave us the...
It's out.
It just went out about 10 months. That's the way it always is.
I'll be bringing that up for you, that will be a part of that verification thing. So we need to get that repaired because it's a very pretty clock, so we need to get that repaired. And that's all I have.
I don't have anything to bring out tonight, except I believe we are short two policemen, patrolmen. And all we're going to do tonight is, I'll bring it up to advertise it for hiring just one officer for right now. And maybe later on, if we get some good ones, maybe later on we'll hire someone. But we've got two positions open, but we need to fill one because we lost one.
Put it out, post it, post it, be it.
Whatever the proper channel is to...
I have it on the agenda to add somebody to the Tom Bell Center Board, but I'm not going to do anything due to the fact that, it was brought to my attention that they conducted a meeting over the telephone, and I called the league municipalities, you know, that's in breach of the Sunshine Law. So, I mean, they can go back and, you know, reconsider how they're doing it or whatever, but I'm just not going to do anything with that. And I got something else that's brought to my attention. This was sent to both the papers. It says, "Due to the increasing request for direct notice slash agenda of the Ringsville City Councilman, we are limiting our public notices as follows, bulletin board at City Hall, City of Ringsville's webpage, and Mountain Valley News." I just don't think we can exclude the general or some of those.
By state law, we don't have to do but one of those.
Well, it's not according to what the league municipalities said.
That's what they told us?
I just talked to them today, maybe I had a misunderstanding. Well, even if, even if it's not illegal...
I mean, it's on the website, all you have to do is go to the website and pull it down.
Well, I talked to them, I mean, a lawyer, I mean, you know, I'm not a lawyer, I don't claim to be a lawyer. It's, whether it's legal or not, it looks bad. I mean, it's set in a bad press, I think. But, you know, anyway, that's all I've got.
Sammy, you got anything to talk about?
Nope, everything's going well.
Everything's going good? Johnny?
Don't worry, James.
We got the Christmas parade coming up in a few weeks, and so, in that Christmas parade, got Jerry Clifton sitting back here, just going to do the Santa Dash this year for a real good cause. So Jerry, you want to talk about that a little bit?
For y'all that might not remember, a year before last, we actually did our first Santa Dash. I was told by Rita at the school, and some folks, about the need that we had, you know, kids would not have a Christmas. And so, that Santa Dash was something I'd been kicking around for a long time, and I thought, okay, this would be the perfect opportunity to do that. So we did, and we focused strictly on children that would not have a Christmas, and we were very successful with that. We raised almost $20,000. And so, when we gave that to Rita, she told me, she said, "Jerry, I'm going to put this in a fund that will be used only for children that don't have Christmas." She said, "That way, we can't use it for a kid maybe that might have other need, or pay the life bill, or do this, or do that, it's strictly going to be kept in a fund that will only be for children that will not have Christmas." So, last year, they told me, they said, "Hey Jerry, unless you just want to do that Santa Dash, we just skip it because we still got money in the account." But yeah, because there's still a lot of people, even though there's money in the Santa Dash account at the school, there's still people that will contribute. If they know a kid that doesn't, it's not going to have Christmas, they'll still get money. There'll be teachers that'll buy a kid gifts. And so, the money is, you know, still there. So this year, you know, I had some folks say, "Hey, you going to do the Santa Dash?" And I said, "Well, you know, I'll check with the school." So I called the school back, and Tony told me, he said, "No, we've still got money, don't need it." He said, "But if you wanted to do the Santa Dash, let us tell you of the need that we do have." And I said, "Okay, what is it?" He said, "Well, there's a program here that we do called Backpacks of Blessings. And what that is, is it actually provides food for children for them to take home on weekends, because they don't have anything to eat." Now, I had never heard of that before. You know, we in this room are all so blessed. I don't think probably that any of us, when we was a child, ever went without anything to eat when we got home from school or on a weekend. And for everyone in here that are parents, there's probably not been a time that you've not been able to feed your child at night or on a weekend. So, I said, "Okay, well, this is unbelievable to me, that we would have children, not only at Plainfield, but throughout this county, that don't have anything to eat on weekends." So, that's what we're doing with the money this time. We're doing, the money will be given to Backpacks of Blessings, and I think there's actually like 41 kids that they do this for. They pack the food on Friday afternoons, it's given to them very discreetly, so it's not an embarrassment to them or anything of that nature. And that way, they have something to eat on the weekends, because basically, the only food that they get is for breakfast and lunch at the schools. So, that's where the money is going for. I know Derek and Brendan have already signed up, I'll give all y'all another form, and y'all, you know, as I tell people, I don't care if you come and do the dash, because it's a dash, a run, a walk, or crawl, I don't care if it's any of that, and I'll leave some of those to you in case somebody else might want some.
Please, Mr. Clifton, can I have one?
Sure. And, you know, I don't care if you participate in it or not, all I'm interested in is your $30. And, but, everyone who does sign up, you'll get one of these Santa Dash shirts. So, there you go. So, but anyway, I appreciate, you know, the city's support for us, and the last Santa Dash we did a year before last. I hope for support from it this time, and if you don't mind, I'd love to get a picture of y'all with this shirt right here. And if you got any questions, one more thing, besides, of course, I know we got Tim back here, where they can talk more about the parade, but also after the parade, at the Bell Center at 6 o'clock, I know, I think they're going to be doing hot shopping and coffee and stuff probably like that at the park and all that. But Victoria Griffith and her band will be doing a Christmas concert inside the Bell Center, starting at 6 o'clock. It'll be about an hour-long concert, they'll be doing a lot of Christmas songs. We posted a couple of videos here a couple of weeks ago with that, and had a lot of response off of it. So, anyway, we'll be doing that also. But again, I appreciate y'all's support, and anything y'all can do to help spread the word, because I'd love to say, I feel like it's going to be as big as it was before. I don't know if it's simply because of the fact that the weather has been so warm, and people just not really give that much thought about it being Christmas, and the year is just going by so fast, but, you know, we're really, you know, the participation has not been as strong for this year as it has been in the past. So, but, you know, we've still got, November the 30th is the deadline to sign up and get a shirt. So, but, you know, we've still got, November the thirtieth is the deadline to sign up and get a shirt. And you can sign up right up until the day of the Dash, as far as that matter goes. And that will be starting line at three o'clock at the San Antonio Electric Co-op when the parade starts. How about it?
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
That's mine.
Very good, thank you very much. So, can we take a minute to get a picture? Okay, great. Yeah, yeah, we'll let you do it. Yeah, y'all want to come right in here and have a little... Sorry, Dean, it's rusty right here. Oh, no, this hasn't been walled. This is fracked. Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Sammy, you got anything to report about the parade or anything like that?
Countdown here, time to start counting down by days. It's in the tenth, four o'clock line, start at three. Have a float contest with a five hundred dollar top prize, the blue ribbon floats. Of course, look for a lot of floats, a lot of classic cars, a lot of car trucks or whatever. It's that kind of thing. Look, hoping for good weather. Of course, Jerry mentioned the concert after the parade. We'll have Mix and Mingle with Santa at the Babel Center right after the parade as well. I guess that's about all. Thank you.
All right, thank you. This was just a good time to ask if y'all want to ride together, you know, just to, look to get a cop car cap deal or something to, y'all want to ride in the parade together? You don't, Bijon, you don't want to open another pay?
Yeah, I scheduled this trip last year, I didn't know I'm going to be elected, so, sorry.
Hey, when you going to do your job?
Maybe next year. All this was planned before.
We didn't want you to ride with us.
Four, five, six, seven?
Yeah. I'm going to...
Oh, you don't come see me.
So, we'll get something for us, I'll ride on, get some stickers to go inside of it and tell who it is and we'll ride the parade together.
Y'all just put that...
Okay, we'll take a ten minute break.
Granny, Granny, I tell you what. Get on your graph and then he'll say, "You ain't working hard." I was, you know, I was tired as a three otter, about eight, ten years, very wild. And he'd be like, "You ain't working hard enough." I says, "Oh, no, son, Granny made him work." One day, he made me mad as a wind, and I said, "How many hours do you tire in every day? You look this tired of you." And he says, "If you was in the field at daylight, soon as sun comes up, you worked till sun went down." Good sleep. He said, "If I had good airtime, I'd stay in bed all night." Like, sure, that's right. And that was if I didn't make lunch, right? Just ate sandwich at the time I need to lay up. He said, "I said, 'Well, shut up, I hurt that night.'" First track, not a pair of wheels. I had a forward three bottom, well, I'm so bad with this three bottom, with the trails. Well, this pulling it with a, I pulled, I had a forward, that's a turn flat on this bottom. And I tired of doing it all the time. You know, when we hit a home, when college, you know, when we're saying, "I was getting home." Those church or something. You know, those church and that, rock and tide. We fought that for years.
Okay, we'll get started. I'll call, roll. Marshall?
Here.
Bijon?
Here.
Ricky?
Here.
Brandon?
Here.
Eric?
Here.
Everybody's here. Okay, first thing I'm going to do is I'll make the recommendation and one of y'all can make the motion to accept Rodney Williams' resignation from the Public Building Authority. Yes. We have a motion in a second to accept that resignation. And I got one step out of line. They the motion, well, that one passes, we're just going to use that. Who made the motion?
Byron.
Byron and Freeman, second here.
I know what you want to say, I'll make a motion.
Wait a second.
We need to vote on that.
Yeah, all right, that's, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All against, ayes have it, so that passes. What we forgot was to approve the minutes.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept approval of the minutes from the Dallas Councilman.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. All right, now then, getting back on track. Okay, we took up the resignation of Rodney Williams from Public Building Authority. The person that has come up by the Agri Center Board that they recommended to take that spot, he's in the, he's in the city limits, he's already on that board, and that'll be Larry Troyler. So, I'll put that out there.
So, move.
So, I have a motion?
Second.
And a second to put Larry Troyler on the Public Building Authority. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So, Larry's on there. The next thing I have is the repair for the West Water Treatment Plant, Pumpkin Station at the Agri Center. The cost is twenty-eight hundred dollars, which is to swan plumbing. I put that out for a motion.
I'll make a motion.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Here it is. This next one is, since Derek is on the council now and he's got a...
I'm abstaining.
He's got a company in Rainsville. We have to put this out for bid, just like we have in other things in the past. So, the pest control, we will put this out for the city buildings to bid out to the lowest bidder as of the fifth of December at five o'clock.
He wanted to be closed bid too.
Yes, it will be a closed bid and it will open those bids at five o'clock on December the fifth. For the pest control service. And we have a motion in a second to bid out the pest control.
I'm abstaining.
All in favor, say aye. Here it is. I have one abstention. Okay, we'll start off. Marshall, you got anything?
No.
All right. Bijon?
All I want to do is to advertise for hiring one police officer and run it through the paper for fourteen days, whatever the proper channel is. And we do go through the interview process. That's all I have.
That'd be a job hosting for a police officer. Is that in form of a motion?
Not a motion.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second to host for a police officer. We'll take that, it'll be fourteen days, so it'll probably be...
Second meeting in December?
Second meet. Yeah, I just have to... It'll be, we'll have to do that, probably the second meeting in December, so.
Well, let's put it off to January fifth, don't ask, the first meeting in January.
Okay. We'll do it then?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so we'll put it out, we'll put it out there, we'll post it, then you can get applications. And then he wants to do it, the first meeting in January. All right, have a motion in a second. All in favor of posting the police officer's job, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Byron?
Mayor, I've been a servant on the Agri Center Board. I'm resigning from that Agri Center Board due to the fact that I'm the liaison now. The Agri Center Board has recommended that we ought to put Angie Sturt in my place. So, I would move that. Well, I don't think we need to vote on my resignation, do we?
Let's do it, let's play it on the email.
Okay.
Somebody want to make a motion to...
I'll make a motion that Ricky Byron be resigning from the Agri Center Board.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to take Ricky Byron's resignation from the Agri Center Board. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All against? Okay.
The replacement is from the, this is a recommendation from the Agri Center Board is to place Angie Sturt in my position on the Agri Center Board. I'll put that in form of motion.
That's a motion. Got a second?
Brandon?
Brandon? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
The other thing I have, Mayor, is the clock out here at the City Hall is broke. I'm not sure, there's some kind of mechanism and it's messed up, it's out of warranty. It's somewhere between eight hundred to sixteen hundred for repair. So, I'll put that in form of motion if we get the clock repaired at the City Hall.
All right, we have a motion in a second to repair the clock at City Hall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay?
The other thing I have, Mayor, is we've got several different alleyways. The previous administration's been working on some. But we've got three that I'd like to go ahead and get Sam and work with our city engineer, our city attorney, to make sure we're legal on how we postpone that, how we convert that land back to that property owner. But one of them being over on Harrison. Actually runs from Harrison back up Oak Street in between First and Second Avenue. The other one is down here behind All Timp. It's just an alleyway that was recently set up for garbage trucks to run through. Now, we do the one-armed bandit with the garbage service, so they've never been used, they've never been cleaned out. They're, we need to revert back, we need to vacate those and give those back to the property owner. The other one is up on...
Rose and Church.
Rose and Church. And I'd like to go ahead and get Sam, our engineer and our city attorney to set that up for whatever we got to do to pull that revert back to the property owner. Put that in form of motion.
I have a motion to work with Sam and our attorney to vacate some alleyways in the city. Have a motion, one more second. We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
That's all I have, Mayor.
Now, we come to the one with the big list.
We want to let open our bids too, because we got those now. For the renovation of the pool. The first one for Mid-American Pool Renovation is one ninety-two, two fifteen. Mid-American Pool Renovation, one ninety-two, two fifteen. Burdleson Pool Company comes in at one ninety-five, five. And Harrison Granite Construction Company, two forty-eight, nine seventy-five.
This is the first one, Mid-American Pool.
Mid-American Pool comes in with the lowest bid.
My recommendation on this that we turn this, turn these over to the architect, let him look at it.
Yes, sir. We'll make a motion if we do turn in the lowest bid to the architect and let him look at it and give us his opinion.
Yep, and then we'll report back at the next meeting on that. We have a motion in a second to turn the bids over to the architect, let him go over it, make sure everything's right. Have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we'll give that to Mr. Thompson. That is who saw it taking this in.
Yeah, and we also, we're going to have to make a motion to rebid the renovation of the pool house.
Okay, so that's just the pool, that's not the...
That's just the pool, just the pool.
Yeah, gotcha.
Which is actually a little better than what we were thinking.
The pool house, Sammy, you're talking about, what's the deal in?
We didn't get a bid on it.
No, they bid on it?
We had two people that told us that they just, they want to, but didn't have a chance to get it turned in.
Okay. All right, why don't you just make a motion that we will rebid the pool house as of...
Yeah, that's one thing.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion we rebid the pool house as for the next council meeting, for the next two weeks.
Next council meeting, which would be at five o'clock of December fifth?
At five o'clock, December fifth.
Okay, have a motion.
I'll say.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
Mayor, I want to make a motion that we empower the mayor to sign the sanitation contract between Silvania and Rainsville. Second.
We have a motion in a second to pass to empower me to sign the contract with Silvania. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
And this is for how many customers?
Five hundred and eighty-one.
It's going to be probably a little, right around six hundred dumpsters and all. Right around six hundred.
What'd y'all work out on dumpsters?
It's just according to what size of this. I have to look at the contract, a lager, an egg yard. Yeah, it's just, it's two different sizes, four and eights. The other thing was the paying for those dumpsters.
Yeah, I didn't know if we need to do it in two different motions, but you empower the contract and I will bring that up, Marshall.
All right, we have a motion in a second to the contract. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
We'll make a motion that we buy the existing cans from Silvania and... We'll make a motion that we buy the existing cans from Silvania and the one dumpster that they own for a grand total of fourteen thousand and fifty.
I'll second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. Before we proceed on this right here, there's more dumpsters that we're going to buy. Now, this is just the one dumpster that they have that we know we're gonna get. But there's about twenty dumpsters up there, and they're all in good shape. We done went and looked at them. And so, um, it's, it's cheaper for us to buy those dumpsters than it is to, yeah, to, than to buy some and have them shipped in. So, if that part will be going up a little bit as we sign people up to, to take over their dumpsters. So, alright, we have a motion and a second to buy the, uh, the carts and one dumpster. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
Sam, what was the name of the place we burned the drag?
Jacobson Equipment.
I'm gonna make a motion to Jacob, that we purchase a drag for a sports complex from Jacobson Equipment for twelve thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars. Which in the previous administration, we put this in our budget, and we budgeted fifteen thousand dollars for this. The equipment that we're replacing was a piece of equipment that was bought used when we opened the building drinks. So if I tell you how long, about that, it is just.
Did you advertise this?
Yes, sir.
And then this is the lowest?
This is the lowest.
I second.
It may not be the lowest, but it's the best one for what we need.
Alright, we have a motion and a second to buy the drag and the sports complex. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I know Sammy does a good job. He tried to get chips possible for us.
Mayor, I'm gonna, uh, make a motion, we accept the quote from Jimmy Trayler for construction in the mayor's office for forty, four thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars.
Before we get a second on that, I'm gonna explain this right here. Uh, this is, this is actually downsizing the, the office space for the mayor's office. It's a lone office now, and, uh, we're needing filing, filing area really bad. And so, what we're gonna do is cut the, the mayor's office down into a smaller office. Uh, we're going to, uh, do some construction in there, put a wall in, double sheet rock for, um, fire protection for the files, and do some stuff like that to, to make that a little bit better of a place to store, uh, a lot of our, um, files that we have. And, uh, so that's what this is for. It's not upgraded office, it's actually downsizing it to, uh, to a smaller office. But it's making us a file room and a server room for our computer system. Right now, our computer system sits in a, in a closet that's actually got a vent to the outside world. And it's sitting right beside the hot water heater, which if it blows up, it knocks out all of our computer system and our phone system. So, it needs to be moved to a different location in the building. And so, that's the reason this is, is this construction is, is, and so, I, I just wanted to explain all that so you can have an idea of what's going on. So, alright, we'll hit it.
I seconded it, motion, Mayor.
Alright, we have a motion and a second to accept the bid from Jimmy Trayler. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
I also want to accept a quote, make a motion for Jimmy Trayler for adding panic bars for the side, side doors for the city hall. For one thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars.
Have a motion?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Point order. Uh, on these two things, do we take bids, or was this?
Uh, we didn't, uh, you don't have to bid it unless it's fifteen thousand dollars.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, but I mean, we can.
Oh, okay.
He put the others on, it's the reason I got, we got him to give us a quote on.
Well, I got no personal problem with it, I'm just.
Yeah. Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Well, we done done that anyway, but. Second, that. Derek, y'all gonna speak out, we can't hear you. Okay. Next, Byron.
Uh, maintenance, that we accept a quote also for Jimmy Trayler for the panic bar and door replacement for the annex slash council chamber. Going over twenty-eight hundred dollars.
And I'm gonna explain that one. When we were remodeling this building, uh, we didn't put a panic, see, that one's got panics on it. But we didn't put it on the front door going out of the tax office. And it might not ever come to anything, but if it was to get blocked and somebody got in there and they couldn't get out because of the fire, then it would be really bad. So, that door and the front door is, uh, uh, they need panic bars on. So you can push and it just comes open. This back door in here didn't get in the contract, we just didn't notice it, it was back there in a closet, so it didn't really matter about it. But if somebody tried to go out in, it's an actual door that opens to the inside, which is against fire code, too, to me. I mean, I'm, I'm a little bit more worried about safety stuff, and, and so, that needed to be, that needs to be done. And so, we're changing that door, putting a panic bar on the end too. So if you back there in this closet or in that other room right there, and, uh, this building gets a fire, then you can get out without as much trouble. That would be panic bars on that one, this one, every door in this building would have panic bars on it. So it makes it a lot safer about, you know, getting out of the building, in case one emerges. So, that's the reason we're doing some of this stuff right here. So, proceed.
Do we need to make this in a motion for buying the filing cabinets for the?
Uh, let's go back to that one for the, the, uh, the panic bars on this building, because I stopped it in the middle of the end. So, you made a motion. Uh, we got a motion and a second for this, the panic bars on this building. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, now then.
We didn't make a, a budget or a motion for the filing cabinets?
You can't, you also.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we buy from eBay Alabama, a lot of six of the filing cabinets that is fireproof, everything is twelve hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay. Have a motion and a second.
I'll see.
Well, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
And last but not least is pass the advertising budget for twenty-seven thousand.
Okay.
Second is motion, Mayor.
Alright, we have a motion and a second, pass the advertising budget. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay.
I know we're not in workshop, but, I don't, I know that we're not in the workshop, I shouldn't have asked this during workshop, but as I understand it, all the advertising is gonna be done through the Mountain Valley News. And who else? Is that, what's that?
WVS said, there's more than just that, but it's just, I mean, you say a copy of this, if you want to.
And what was the purpose of knocking out the Times Journal and the, um, Southern Torch? Leaving them out, what was the purpose of that?
Uh, fact that, uh, they wanted to go local. We, we kinda pushed local on everybody, and you probably do too, to shop and dine and do all that in Rainsville. And so, I guess they wanted to go local.
Well, Southern Torch is local.
Mm-hmm.
Why was it, it eliminated or not considered?
Why was it not considered?
Uh-huh.
I'm not gonna say right now.
Well, okay, but it seems to me like that's a little bit, you know, what's the word, uh, biased.
Based, okay.
Yeah.
Well, thank you. Alright, next.
That's alright.
Alright, Derek?
Uh, I just got two things tonight, Mayor. Uh, first thing is, uh, I'm gonna be, I guess they made a motion, I'm gonna be resigning from the Tom Bellas Center Board. I'm just gonna be resigned from Tom Bellas Center.
Okay.
I guess you didn't probably make it, so.
Make a motion on it.
I'll make a motion for Derek Dawson to resign from Aggris Center.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Alright, second.
Uh, the second thing I have is, is to empower the mayor to sign the agreement with Barry and Dunn. It's, uh, three hundred and seventy-five dollars, that's every year, that's for maintenance and, um, other things like that. So I'll, uh, make that into a motion to empower.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to empower me to sign the contract with, uh, Barry and Dunn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
That's all I got, Mayor.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pay monthly bills.
And I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Uh, on this advertising budget, uh, I gave y'all some extra, two extra ones, and I just wanted to say that, uh, you know, I'm gonna, we're gonna go strictly by this budget, uh, instead of like, everybody getting out and doing other advertising. So, try to hold it to this budget as much as possible. We don't want to get into any kind of issues with, um, you know, going outside that budget area. So, that's one of the first things on our budget, is we're gonna work in the budget as much as possible. So, alright, now then you dismiss this.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. All in favor of adjourn?
Aye.
Alright.